Okay, before we call the Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order, I wanted to let you know that I did check with the American Legion. And the Memorial Day celebration will be at 12 noon at Victory Park. Apparently on Saturday, members of the American Legion will be in the park cleaning it up and planting flowers. Sergeant, I forget his name.
Jesse.
Sergeant Jesse will be scrubbing the tank as well. A much-needed cleanup of the tanks. I promised that I would do that and make sure you knew that. With that being said, I will now call the Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. Mayor Williams, we're doing this at your request to let us know about the 911 system. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I have Lieutenant Mark Rankin and Chief Kramer here, Safety Service Director Joe Gears. As you know, this thing has been going on for years and years and years. And every time there's a financial problem, 911 comes up. And every time it comes up and it's reviewed and looked into, they find out that it's not that expensive and it's hard to replace it. So with that, I'll let Lieutenant Rankin go ahead and proceed with his presentation. He's worked hard on this and he's indicated that he would cut it back. So he would be available to answer your questions. At the conclusion of his presentation, I want to do a short statement and answer questions with you on reference on the 911 system and how I feel about it. And it's no secret how I feel about it. So I can give you my reasons for it. So with that, Lieutenant Rankin, would you proceed, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you guys hear me? Okay. I hate death by PowerPoint. So I want to get -- it basically will keep me on track, so I won't ramble on. I went from hundreds of slides down to like 100 and I broke it down and broke it down. So I've got a very brief overview, but it's more just to kind of keep me on track to kind of put some information out there that I think I need you to know. And I would like to save majority of the night for you guys to ask questions because I think that's the best way we're going to learn about what we do, how we do things, cost factors and everything else, by you asking questions and then me trying to answer them best I can. Again, things we're going to cover a little bit, we're going to talk a little bit about what is a PSAP, what that word means. Everybody hears about PSAP this and PSAP that. We've got to -- we're going to talk a little bit about the Enhanced 911 System, the Emergency Enhanced 911. We're going to talk, we'll overview our Communication Center a bit. We're going to go into a cost analysis on what the center costs to citizens in Norwood. We're going to go over alternative PSAP options. We'll talk about the PSAP hosted solution that I gave you all quotes on, the software and hardware systems that I put on your desks. And then those systems are the Solocom Guardian 911 PSAP, the Guardian mapping software and the latest technology, Text to 911. We'll go a little bit of a review and we'll go into questions. Okay? First thing, what a PSAP is, it's nothing more than a call center that answers emergency and non-emergency calls for the city of Norwood. That's what our PSAP does. There's many other things that a PSAP will do what Norwood does. In some communities, a PSAP, that's all they do. They just calls in, calls out, they just handle the emergency situations and the calls for police, fire, and EMS services. We do warrants, KPS entries, we verify warrants, we enter the warrants, we do missing persons, adult missing, child missing, critical missing. We do records management, we do the incident management. We document the calls for service for the city of Norwood. So if somebody says on June 1st, 2014, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, somebody made a run to my house, we document that information. We also are, have come over the years to turn into a 411 system for Norwood. The citizen of Norwood needs an answer, whether it be what time's Halloween, because I know it's the same time every year, but what time's Halloween to when can I put my TRAD scans out, what's the phone number for the water department? That's a lot of the information. It's kind of like an information collection where people can call to get answers or get transferred to the right people to get those answers. All of our dispatchers or communication personnel are trained operators in 911. We all, 911 worked is, everybody had a home phone before the innovation of cell phones. You called 911, it went to your phone carrier's switch and basically they decided based on the information you provided to them when you got your service, which PSAP your phone went to. Cellular calls and voice-over-IP calls, that's kind of changed things up a little bit. And as you can see, we've added in what we call is an ANI or an automatic numbering system or basically a master street guide. So I want you, if you can see, the 911 call goes into the switch and then that, with cell phones and voice-over-IP, it goes into this master street guide, back to the switch and then routed out to the appropriate PSAP. That being said, we'll get it, I want to get into exactly how that works. You make a 911 call from a cellphone, it hits a tower. We call it the best tower because the best tower's not always the closest tower to you. You could be driving down 71 and many times we have the tower right over here behind Public Works. Your cellphone might hit that tower. You could be closer to that tower, but yet the cellphone might pick up because it's got a stronger signal at a tower a little distance away. So it's not always, the best tower's not always the closest tower to you. People need to understand that the tower triangulation that it does may not pick that up. It's important in our world, in your world, just realize that your phone bounces off a cell tower. The tower then transmits your voice signal, your callback number and the tower's ID number to the phone company, a switching service. That switching service assigns it an ANI, an automatic numbering system that will kind of identify your number with a various, couple of different reasons. So it's a 10-digit code it gets. That code then goes to our ANI OR, it goes to that information street index kind of thing. It goes into the mapping program where Phase 1 mapping is, it basically uses a tower, cell antennas and your distance from those towers. The signal strength your cellphone puts off to the tower. So it uses that. Phase 2 is all our smartphones. Our smartphones are all GPS-enabled. Phase 2 means that not only is your phone sending the phone signal and collecting that, the phone number and the voice information, but it's also collecting lat-long information. So that lat-long coupled with the tower triangulation and your phone number and whatnot gets sent through this database and then it sends the information back to the switch, which is like your phone company. And then your phone company uses that to send it to the appropriate PSAP. So it uses two different systems. Phase 2 allows cell phones to be more accurately tracked. And then I'm sure we'll get into GPS and cell phones a little later. All this happens in a fraction of a -- yeah, we'll get into it, but all of it happens in a fraction of a second. You think it's bouncing off these different systems and it'll go to the PSAP. The PSAP will send it back to the ANI or to the mapping system that tries to figure out where it's at. And we call it a rebid process. And that, if you're moving, if your phone's moving, it kind of re-triangulates, keeps sending that lat-long back to the PSAP so we can track it on a mapping system. Again, your local exchange carrier or your phone company then takes the voice signal, the ANI information and then decides based on the GPS and all that and sends it off to the appropriate PSAP. The PSAP receives all this information, they receive the voice call basically on the phone. The GPS and the cell tower information comes through your CPE and then that's into your database and that helps us map where the actual call's coming from. If anybody's got an iPhone and you look at the Find My iPhone, it's got the little, the different signal strengths saying you're in this green circle area, that's essentially what this is doing. It's giving, it's triangulating your phone and kind of giving a general idea. It gets better and better every year. Every year we get more and more technological advances, the signal strength gets stronger and we're pinpointing people in smaller and smaller areas. And that's why I talked about the rebid process where we can either manually do it or it automatically does it, where we can go back out and essentially, everybody knows what pining a cellphone is. We go back out and we grab the information from the cellphone again. So we're asking for the system to give us their information again, to make sure that phones, as that phone's rolling down the street or that person's moving, we can see that information. And it happens automatically and then we can also go in and manually do it. And then basically the call's handled. Sometimes a call will come in through triangulation, the GPS and based on the cell tower strength that it's hitting off of, like I said, we talked about the best tower, not the actual closest tower. Because of that information, initially it might send it to the wrong PSAP. And then that's when we, as communication personnel, we ask the questions necessary to triangulate where that person is and then we can get it out. That's why, one of the reasons why the Norwood Communication Center is a value to the city is when we, when you call us, we ask you for landmarks. Where are you at? What's the street sign? What do you buy? You say, "I'm by the Wendy's," well, everybody knows. The larger the facility that's handling the calls, they're not going to know where individual city landmarks are, they're not going to know where the street names by heart. So you've got that ability for us to use cross-reference technology with actual folks who know this community and we use both those informations to route those calls appropriately. Okay, there's four PSAPs in Hammond County. We've got City of Cincinnati. What I ranked these in largest to smallest? It does get loud. City of Cincinnati is by far the largest. If you look at this 911 call totals, we're not going to look at the blue numbers, but just the green numbers. If you go to City of Cincinnati, you'll see there's on total wireless calls, there are 335,930 wireless calls during 2017. Hammond County Communication Center is the second-largest PSAP in the county and they had 151,554 calls. So considerably a good amount, 40,000 less or 35,000 less than City of Cincinnati. Or if it doubled, then double less. Norwood, we're next. And we had 14,357 wireless calls during 2017. And then Amberly is last but not least and they had 5,700 calls. What that means is when we talk about how the calls are received, your ability as citizens to reach our center. If you think about, take Hammond County's numbers, oh, I'm sorry, I took City, yeah, Hammond County's numbers. Hammond County has 10 radio operators at all times. That's 10 dispatchers just working the radios. So math is real easy for me there. At 151,000, that's basically a little more than 15,000 wireless calls per dispatcher when you've got 10 working at a time. So out of a year, that's 151 calls per dispatch point that comes through. They have 60 dispatchers, but they run 10 at a time. So that's, if I get the math. 151,000 calls, 10 dispatchers, 10 radio operators. Split those calls up amongst the 10 positions, that's 15,000 calls per position in a year. Norwood has 14,000. We do three calls or three dispatchers on average. We're allowed to go down to two at times to avoid overtime issues. We, during the slowest times of the day, we calculate calls for service, what are the peak times, what are the moderate times and what are slow times. On slow times, we try to cut costs. So we drop us down to two dispatchers or two communications personnel. But that three personnel, that puts us about 4,500 calls, almost 5,000 calls per spot. So 15,000 calls are 5,000 calls. And those are just wireless. That doesn't take into consideration the landline calls and there are quite a few landlines out there, both business calls as well as home phones. So I want to get into those numbers a little bit more, but I want you to understand that if a dispatcher receives 15,000 wireless calls in a year and another dispatcher receives 4,500 wireless calls a year, there's more, there's a greater ability to obviously answer those calls and give more personal service, in my opinion, to the calls that come in. So because we're a smaller PSAP, we're a smaller community, we have a greater ability to receive the calls from our citizens, to evaluate the calls and get the appropriate service. We don't rush through them. We can get right to the calls. Okay, just a brief overview of the different locations. You can see, this is the City of Cincinnati outlined in the green. They handle all the areas inside this area. This is Hammond County. Hammond County handles everything in yellow. This is us. Kind of makes us look tiny, but we are the city within the city, right? And then here's Amberly Village, even smaller than we are. Okay, that's the numbers. We talked about those. We are a primary PSAP in Hammond County, which means we are, we have the same training and abilities that any of the other PSAPs have. We have the same equipment, maybe different name brands, different stuff, but we handle all the 911 calls. There isn't any magic, secret magic to these calls coming in. As a primary PSAP, we meet the same standards as the other county PSAPs. We handle only enhanced, or enhanced 911 calls for the Norwood area. Again, we have three call taker, radio operator positions and we have a fourth position, which is a backup position that we're currently not staffed. We have nine full-time dispatchers, seven part-time dispatchers. We recently hired five new dispatchers, so they're in training now. So the costs that were associated when I get to those costs from 2017 should go down, the overtime costs, but that's why we hired the five is to eliminate the overtime costs. And then we keep two to three communications officers on staff 24 hours a day. Some of the benefits that I feel that the Norwood Communication Center provides to the city is, when I talk about the real-time access to city services. If you call the dispatch center, whether landline or whether a regular phone call or you call 911 and you need service, we're going to get you to the right people. There's not going to be delay. We're not having an officer, we're not going to have to call an officer in to call you out. We're going to patch you through to the right people and get those calls out immediately. One thing that we started, the process on is, and we, is we realized that there's a need for, we enter information for the police and the fire departments. If you have a business in Norwood, it has a specific safety hazard rating, the fire department wants to dictate at every run to that business, they want a certain amount of equipment. We automatically program that into our system so that when we receive a call for service for fire for that business, it automatically tells us that we need to send this, all this equipment. It cuts down on the delay of figuring out which services we need to send. It also gives the fire department all the tools they need in real time, immediately to the scene because they don't have to think, "Oh, that's this business. We should probably make sure we got the ladder truck going with the squad on that or the pumper should go with the squad on that." So we enter that information for both police and fire. If the police have a situation where they have an address that has a chronic problem, we can, we enter information about addresses, we can enter information about people. If you're, and where this, where I'm taking this is, we would, we're looking at a situation where, or implementing to where if you as a citizen have an elderly family member that's diabetic and you would like for us to put medical information, that put the fact that they're diabetic, put what medicines they're on, put who their doctor is, put contact call numbers for their family members. We can enter all that information in on the address and tie it to the person. So that if we get a call, "My grandfather's down, I need the squad here, he's diabetic" and we can, we'll have a whole list of information provided by the family that we can access that. We can take that even further by, you have a child with a cellphone and we can actually tie information to that cellphone. So if we get a call from that cellphone, we can tie the parents' work phone numbers, home phone numbers, cellphone numbers, grandparents, we can tie schools, we can put vehicle information in. The amount of information we can tie in to residences, businesses and citizens at their request is just unimaginable. We can continue to add that information in so that we can prioritize our services and kind of cut through the delay by trying to figure out the information that we may need to, whether it be to locate someone or to get the proper services to them if they're not able to tell us themselves. Okay, so we meet, the procedure's set forth by our dispatch center. And why I bring this up, because having your own communication center, I'm very much for this because as a, if you want for your, the dispatch center, if you want to call 911 or you want to call the dispatch and ask for a certain service to help you out, to answer a question, solve one of your problems, to be able to modify that as our community needs change is very easy for our center. We're not a cookie cutter, it's not you're going to do it our way, we're going to do it the way the citizens want it. And that's why keeping your hometown communication center is another reason why it's important. Accountability. You can ask police and fire department anytime they find an issue where they feel that something could be done better in the communication center. I get an email, phone call, text message or all three. It doesn't matter, they don't care what time of the day it is, they call me. So we are constantly reviewing, we have every policeman, every fireman, half the citizens are doing it. They find that we have a problem, they complain, we evaluate it, we look at, I evaluate, look at it and we try to, we make corrections, modifications or we enforce training options to make sure that those things don't happen. Norwood calls are always primary. Hammond County handles, and I don't want to beat up Hammond County, Cincinnati is far larger, but when we talk about our alternative PSAP option, our alternative PSAP option is Hammond County. They, there's 44, I think, don't quote me on this, but I think there's 44 agencies, police agencies in Hammond County. They handle probably 40 of them or at least 30, let's just go low, number 35 of them. I think that's probably real accurate. And all those, all those communities, they are, their dispatch procedures are based on county procedures, what the county wants. Those, if you call 911 in a community that's handled by the county, you call 911 by the county, they all come into the system, they're trying to prioritize them, try to answer them and they do a very good job of answering those calls for service. But every call that comes into Norwood is a priority to us. And every call that comes to us, 99.9% of them are Norwood calls. So we handle your calls first and only, and that's the way it, I think it should be done. Again, the Norwood knowledgeable dispatchers, our dispatchers know the landmarks, they know your streets. They get to know the citizens by living here, working here, them calling in, following up on the runs that are made. They get to know the citizens very well. Whereas Norwood is a small community and our dispatchers are very knowledgeable of the folks in it and the businesses that are, come to hold their business here. I think I duplicated some of that, didn't I? And then customized dispatching capabilities, I talked a little bit about that with the fire department, the police department is starting to do that as well. They're calling us with some changes and modifications that they like based on the addresses and whatnot so that we can dispatch the officers to the scenes of certain businesses, certain addresses that they have information on in a more efficient manner. I'm hurrying through. All right, so statistics. These are 2016 statistics. I do apologize, when I was doing this, I wasn't doing this in 2016, but when I started putting it together, I realized that I had grabbed 2016 statistics. 2017 statistics are very comparable. We have 46,000 police incidents in 2016 and 4,300 fire incidences. Salary expenditures, this is, these are 2017 numbers that I got straight from the R's office. $548,000 in salaries for full-time and part-time officers or dispatchers combined. Missland is cost, this is every other thing that was attributed to the 911 setup. Some of those costs, well, let's just say, that's what we paid out of the 911 keys or the dispatch center keys, $280,000. That number comes to $827,000 is what your cost for the dispatch center is. The PSAP changes, which I sent you the bill, well, I'm going to get to those, but that ranges from $109,000 to $160,000 and that's a five-year number. That's not, that is a complete, total encompassing five-year number and I'll show you how that works. Current system right now, we have maintenance and service on our 911 system. We have a system to handle just 911 calls. That PSAP software, hardware system is $17,000 a year in maintenance. Our mapping system, and that's that Phase 2 GPS mapping system, when your cellphone sends the latlongs through the system and we get that, that mapping system runs, it's about $3,400 a year for the map. We have a good mapping system. The upgrades that I am suggesting to meet the PSAP standard, the mandatory PSAP standard that is being placed by January 31st of 2019, is to go with in digital's Guardian PSAP program through, I'm sorry, it's in digital's, it's Solocom's Guardian, digital's Solocom Guardian PSAP program. If I take a five-year, that's five years of all the hardware, all the software, the training, the implementation, the GPS, we have to reconfigure that, all of that plus maintenance and service is $21,980 for the first five years. Remember, for PSAP to PSAP, we're paying $17,000 now. So we're going to have, for the new hardware, the updated software, it's absolutely a phenomenal system. When, I would love to, if you guys are interested, I'd be happy to bring the company in and they can give you a presentation on the system, but I was absolutely, completely impressed with this particular system. After the five years are up, our maintenance and service for the PSAP drops down to $8,200 a year. Now granted, we're paying $17,000 a year now, that's not going to drop. If we were to continue status quo, that would stay that number or increase. You would think that would increase after six years, it would be a little higher than $17,000. So we're dropping, we're going to have our costs reduced to $8,200. Now the mapping system, again, $7,000 for five years, that's everything, all encompassing and that is a state-of-the-art touchscreen mapping system. What I like about this mapping system is, regular mapping system will show pinpoints on a map where your call is coming in. This mapping system, if I got a cluster of calls here for, say, an auto accident, tanker, truck on fire on the highway, people are really upset and everybody's calling 911. So I'm getting dozens of calls at once and it's going to show a huge cluster of 911 calls on 71. What if somebody's got a choking child or a house fire or something in the north end? The current mapping system will show that, but it's very difficult to try to get to that other call. We know that all these calls are coming in from this accident. We're going to answer them, we're going to answer them in as timely a fashion as we can, but it'd be very nice to be able to just reach up, touch that map and pick up that other call and try to find out what that emergency call is for. So that's one of the many reasons why I like this, this new mapping system. It is $7,000 a year for five years, so it is a little more expensive. Do the math, what's that, $2,600 more dollars, that sound like about right? For five years, but then after the five years, again, the six-year on, it cuts in half, almost in half. The next is Text to 911. Person, it's very difficult for me to think that, you know, I remember when cell phones came out, but Text to 911 is the future. It's where our kids want us to be and there's a very good reason for it. If somebody's burglarizing your home and you're hiding in a closet, you do not want to call 911 and have to speak at all. You want to be as quiet as possible, right? Text to 911 will provide that. If you have an incident and you want to call the police, you can send video through the Text to 911 program. It does audio messages through the Text to 911. That is, that is a very good program. We do not have it currently. It's $3,000 a year for five years and after that, it's $2,000 a year after that. So for the five years, $109,000 is what the cost is over that five years for the PSAP. If we want the suite, we want all this, we want to upgrade our mapping to a state-of-the-art mapping program, add Text to 911 and get an absolutely fully customizable PSAP. mapping program, add text 911, and get an absolutely fully customizable PSAP, that's $160,000. Now, those numbers, our cost savings are $9,000 to $12,000 more, we're paying $9,000 to $12,000 more. $9,000 for just a PSAP, $12,000 more a year for five years if we buy the whole thing. After the five years, we're saving $9,400 on just a PSAP, or up to $11,600 a year on the maintenance and service of these systems. That's including text to 911, which is $2,000 a year, and we don't currently have that now. Yes?
Yeah, Lieutenant, so could you explain, so the $21,980, it has five years, so is that a yearly cost of $21,000, or is that the total five-year cost?
No. In your packet, the last page in your packet is a quote from the finance company for the, this is broken down off the $160,000 number. $21,980 is what it costs a year for the PSAP. We're currently paying $17,000 for maintenance and service. The equipment, we've got the equipment several years ago, the software is several years old, it's a good system, it's a very good system, but nothing beats brand-new, that new smell of a new PSAP system. The Indigital Solocom PSAP system is truly state-of-the-art. It meets some of the state's standards as far as interoperability or connectivity with our state borders, and that's a whole nother conversation to go into, but it meets a lot of the standards that the state is going in a direction, or wanting to go in a direction for public safety answering points. So to answer your question again, it's $22,000 a year versus the $17,000 we're paying now. After five years, we have, we will have bought the system, and it drops down to $8,200 a year instead of $17. So we have a five-year purchase plan. Yes?
Is it my understanding that you think that was getting out of the business of PSAP?
As of January 31st of 2019, they will shut the computers off.
So they have to do something.
We, that's why I'm here. We have to either decide to purchase this system, just the PSAP, keep our current Matic system at $3,400 a year, we save a couple thousand dollars a year for five years, but then we don't recoup the cost in the future. The text to 911, that's something I think we really should look at getting it to be a primary PSAP, we need that. So I would suggest that we, if you want to cut some costs and not do some costs initially, that the Guardian mapping, which is a phenomenal mapping system, but that would be the only area I would say you could save a few dollars, that's $6,000 a year.
For this, we have to do something.
We either have to participate in this program, or we have to decide to contract with another agency, another PSAP to handle our calls for service. And that's probably my next slide.
Can I say this? If we just take, replace a Cincinnati Bell system, that's mandatory, am I right?
Yes, yeah, we have to replace it.
If that's mandatory, we have to do that. The other part, I guess what you would say is optional. So if that's optional, when we take care of the mandatory part, that's when we can come to the finance committee and say, okay, we're looking at these other areas, and then look at the consideration of that. But we have to do the Cincinnati Bell aspect of it, because they're getting out. This does not have to be at once, except for the 911, am I right?
The $22,000 PSAP program, we either have to transfer our service, all our calls to another agency, or pay that cost.
So in other words, the other agencies would be available to us if we don't go with the $22,000.
It would be Hamilton County, that's our option.
But along with that option, they're not doing it for free.
That's my next slide. Okay. All right, so let's move on. Okay, so here's a cost factor. What I took is, Hamilton County charges $15 for a dispatched run. I factored it in two ways, a worst-case scenario and a very reasonable estimation of our call service. We estimated that 80% of our calls are dispatched runs. That's the number that I estimate. 80% of police, you have to pay 100% of fire, because the fire department doesn't dispatch themselves. So they won't stumble across the fire most of the time. Usually someone's got to call it in, which means the PSAP has to dispatch it. Fire department, because the way Hamilton County bills is they bill $15 a dispatch, they dispatch the fire department, they automatically dispatch the police department. So that's $30 for the fire department's calls, and remember we said it was about 4,300 fire department calls. So I factored in the $30 for a fire department call, because that also has to say, hey, police department, fire department's making a run, whether we go or not, that's part of the protocol. So their $30 a call, the police department is 15, at 80%, we have $622,000. Now, remember, our total costs are $827,000. Calls for service go up, costs go up. Right now, at 100% of our police and fire runs, 100% of our calls, if all of our calls were dispatched, we're at $762,000. But the cost will go up. They're not going to maintain that 15, because several years ago, we were $22, and we're at 15 now. And so we'll get to that another date and time. Our clerical staff, when I say communication clerical staff, we have to, there are things that our dispatch center does that other dispatch centers do not. We enter warrants, we enter capaces, we enter missing persons, missing childrens, we enter stolen, we do stolen article searches for our pawn shops, for our detectives, we run things, we do a lot of clerical services that just cannot be dismissed. To maintain a minimum of one clerical person in the dispatch center for those purposes, someone calls and says they can't find their child, and we got to get it entered into the system, so that every agency has the information, so that the missing children's clearinghouse gets the information. In order to do that, we have to have a person there. And to maintain one person 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, a minimum of $412,000 in salaries to do that. That's six full-timers and three part-timers. Six full-timers will pretty much cover most of it, the part-timers will cover some days that the full-timers aren't there, as well as vacations, off times, and things like that, sick. So you got to add that $412,000. Now, there's a $70,000 bill that we have to pay for some, a system that allows us to tie our radios to the cell phone towers. Years ago, our radios operated off of radio signals to a repeater on the roof, and it sent it to a tower, I believe it was in Butler County, and then that Butler County sent it back to the radio standing right next to you. The system now, as we call it Mark system, it's essentially, it's a software, hardware connectivity program that ties our dispatch center to the cell towers, every cell tower in the area. So we get, we have very clear radio service. Our radios work so much better now, because we are bouncing off, we're translating our radio signal into a signal that the cell phone towers can handle, and then we're running those cell phone towers. That's why our radios are, that's modern-day radios. That $70,000, we started buying that system in 2016, when we started this program, Cincinnati and Hamilton County entered into an agreement with the technology group that handles the cell tower part, and we had to buy the Mark system in order to be part of that system.
And that's all part of the emergency response system across health departments?
Yes, every bit of it.
And everything, so the health department has the same Mark treaty with.
Well, and we have to keep them. It's cost us $70,000 a year up to 2021, that's our last year, November 2021, we paid that last payment, then we owned the system, but then probably by then, you know, there'll be an upgrade, a small upgrade or a service agreement, we have to take care of. But that $70,000 is added to the Hamilton County side, because that's included in our $279,000 costs over here. So when you add all those together, at 80% call service, I've come up with about a little over a million dollars at my estimation. If we were to get all of a sudden not have as many dispatched runs, like a substantial amount less, thousands and thousands of runs, tens of thousands of runs less, then those costs could come down. I don't expect for that to happen anytime soon, and I don't expect for the costs to go down or even stay the same, if we were to transfer our services to the county. One thing I want you to keep in mind, if we switch to the county and allow them to dispatch us, there won't be any switching back. The second we close our doors and transfer our program, our Norwood communication center will cease to exist, and the state will not let us start up again.
Can I add one thing to keep in mind here, over the years of this history? For example, there was the chief of the smart department out there, the cost went up so much on the calls, that he issued cell phones to the beat cars, and they couldn't make a run, because they was getting a call from the residents. And the other thing you got to keep in mind is, if there's one person there, I can assure you, you get a lot of thunderstorms coming through there, or you get a large fire, and the 911 system in the county lights up, and our residents can't get through, they're going to call 458-4520, and there's going to be nobody there to answer. That's the dilemma and the potentials that we face because of strictly the volume. If the volume is too big, and they can't get through to 911, and it's not the county's fault, but handling all those agencies, and if they can't handle it, and our people can't get through, because they're swamped, they'll call 458-4520. And if they send a bunch of calls in there, and there's one person, it won't get answered there. So is it going to happen? Can it happen? Absolutely.
What I can tell you is to piggyback on what the mayor said, is this is a map of Hamilton County's jurisdictions that they dispatch for. Has anybody ever watched a lot of thunderstorms come in and see the red sweep across the area? Imagine the 911 calls, and look, as you go through these communities, as that line of thunderstorms is coming through, it's going to light up. We have, we're right here. Okay, not there, right there. No, come on. Touchy. Okay, this is us, this is everybody else. When a line of thunderstorm comes in, this is who we're responsible to as a communication center. We are not having, the communication center might be over here in Colerain, but we may have outages all across the area. Now, when we had our big flood, was it 2016 when the remarkable Norwood went underwater for a brief moment, the gem of the Highlands? We had hundreds of calls come in, in a very short period of time. We have three communications points. We handled the calls as best we could, we made a lot of changes, a lot of upgrades, I'll talk about those in a minute, to that, to the center to alleviate some of the problems that we had during that time. But imagine, if 100 calls come in at one time, we cannot handle it. Neither can the city, neither can the county, neither can Amberly Village. It's impossible. They have 10, they have 14 call takers, Hamilton County has 14 call takers, 10 dispatchers. So they can handle 14 calls at once. That's it. And they have 35 agencies. We're one agency, we can handle three calls at once. In the event that we know something traumatic is coming, something devastating is coming, we can backfill the communication center, and we could have 911 call, we could have three 911 answering points, and we could have four, five, six landline answering points. So we can handle half the amount of calls for service that the entire jurisdiction of Hamilton County does, because we can fill those landlines as well. And a lot of our citizens will call for stuff like, did you know that our street in front of us is flooded? And we'll get four, five, six, seven, 10 calls about the same swimming pool on Franklin Avenue. So we fill those calls, and we transfer them to the right authorities, but 911 is the priority. So we can handle as much as we can handle, nobody can handle when a catastrophe hits, but we will work through it, and we will only work through it for the one agency. We'll only work through it for Norwood. If we were to go to the county, we would be one of 35, 36 calls coming in, and they come in and they prioritize them as best they can. And there's a whole criteria on how to prioritize 911 calls, but you got to answer them, and you got to ask questions. And then they still have to enter the information, and they tier them, and then a dispatcher has to go through and take the priority calls first, but they can only answer calls as fast as we can, one at a time. Let's see where I'm at here. Okay, so we have wireless funding. Touch real quick on that, right now, wireless funding is every cell phone in Hamilton County gets billed a quarter, state of Ohio gets billed a quarter, it's part of your bill. So when you pay your cell phone bill, there's a little line in there, it's 25 cents goes to the state, the state divvies up the money amongst the counties, the counties divvy up the money amongst the PSAPs, based on how many calls those PSAPs get. If Cincinnati gets 300,000, Hamilton County gets 200,000, we get 5,000, whatever it may, they take the total calls, do the math, and we get a percentage. Our percentage currently is $55,000 to $60,000 a year. So that is money that comes in that funds the PSAP center, that money would also go away. So we use that money, some of that money is used to buy the services that I've outlined for you. What I'd like to do is I'd like to use that 911 funding, that $55,000 to $60,000 on minimum a year to pay for those PSAP upgrades. And then we have the rest of it that we could use for other items. That funding is going to change. The state has got some, they're implementing some increases, the state has some ideas on how they want to increase the overall communication system within the state of Ohio, that's very long and drawn out, we'll get into it, but that money may go up to as high as 50 cents per line. It could be anywhere in between, it could be a little more than that, but that's kind of the rumor that we're getting. We're hoping that we will get a percentage of more of that. If you go from a quarter to 50 cents, we're not going to get 50 cents, but we should get a bigger cut because of the implementations that the state's requiring. So that's our wireless funding. We have operational standards that started back in May of 2016, and are now in place currently. As of May of this year, those standards were implemented, and we are doing a, we're in a trial and correction stage right now, and then come next year, 2019, the standards will be required. And I'm going to, some of those standards are minimum staffing, and I'm going to touch these real quick, but essentially, we meet this standard. We have to have a minimum of two telecommunicators on staff 24 hours a day, we maintain two, two-three, and we have to have a policy prioritizing emergency functions. Clearly, that's not an issue. 911 runs are more important than a non-911 run. This is minimum training guidelines. This affects employees hired after May of 2018. It doesn't look like at this point that we need to hire anybody else, we've hired what we needed to hire to get us to where we're not paying overtime as much. So these training standards, although, are very reasonable and very necessary, they are not, they really pretty much do not affect us. And these are just more of the standards. And I can provide you with a copy of these if you need. Continuing training standards. In law enforcement, there's continuing training, there's continuing training in firefighting and EMS services, dispatch is no different, communications through state of Ohio is required that we have, we do training every year. We've completed the training for 2018 already. Didn't cost you anything, it was online training, all of our dispatch personnel completed it, as well as the administrative law and police staff up the food chain, from me to the captain, I think even the chiefs completed the training.
Lieutenant?
Yes?
When we go back, could we look at the new training standards for May 2018 that you talked about? So even though we didn't need to do it for the ones that we've already hired, I mean, anybody we hired from this point on, we're going to have to fulfill these standards, is that correct?
These standards are communications officer standards. These aren't, this isn't anything that's shockingly new. This is what a dispatcher has to know in order to be a dispatcher. So we train to these standards. We are in a process, I'm in a process of writing a training policy that will outline the steps that we meet these standards, but every new dispatcher gets thoroughly trained, our five new dispatchers have been in training for some time, where they're trained on general dispatching knowledge, population and demographics of the community, the geography, you know, the landmarks, or the different businesses we have, where they are, how they're located. So we do train to these standards, but to formalize it in the state, in the manner that the state requests, that is in progress. And long before we ever hire anybody else, that these will be done. I'll have these done in a few months.
Perfect, thank you.
This is a continuing training standard, we talked about that. Emergency dispatching, or EMD. EMD is a wonderful program that when, if someone calls 911, and they have a, you call and you... you call and your husband is having a heart attack. He's unconscious on the floor, but he's breathing. You call 911, or he's unconscious and not breathing. Whatever the situation be, you have an emergency situation, you call 911. What's great about the Norwood Police and Fires, when you call 911, we are there quickly because we're a very small community and our police and fire are excellent services. But for those fragile seconds that it takes to get a paramedic from the firehouse to your home, there are things we can do to help the homeowner to remain calm, to give us additional information, as well as to maybe even provide some emergency services. CPR. EMD is about talking the homeowner through basic CPR over the phone to talk them about breathing control, shock control, whether it be something to wear, electrocution issues. You name the emergency situation and EMD will cover it to a certain extent. That program is already in place. It's already been initiated. We used some of our 911 funds to purchase the initial training for the EMD instructor. That EMD instructor will get his certifications. And when he's done, he is one of our lead dispatchers, one of our trainers for the dispatch center. He will then train all the other dispatchers. We have some of our dispatcher already EMD certified. But he will train the rest of them up. And that includes, we've already covered the cost for purchasing the EMD protocols and information. We're going through the steps now of receiving those, getting the fire department, the paramedics EMS program to review that information and say tweak it to where they feel it would best suit our community and our citizens' needs. We get it signed off by our emergency room physician who's actually our license of record. And then it will be put into place. So we expect, we fully expect for that to be in place by the holidays. So we aggressively pursuing that as we speak. Okay, operational guidelines. Some of the issues we had back in 2016 were brought up where some of our systems weren't tied into the generator. All of our systems now are tied to, should we have power outages in the city? And city hall goes dark, the PSAP center will automatically kick over to the generator. But there is that fraction of time from lights out to generator on that requires what's known as a UPS battery system. It's a battery backup, keeps power surges down as well as, and just a big battery that powers your system. All of our systems are on state-of-the-art, heavy-duty UPS systems. So when the power goes out, the computers keep running and we don't miss a beat. Security. We've got one small issue with the security criteria for this PSAP. And we have paid for the system. We're waiting for it to be built and installed. So that is, we've met that standard as well. An emergency operation plan and continuation of operation, those are two emergency plans that I'm looking at now that will be modified, updated, and brought up to code. So that's, those are in process. So those, we've met the emergency power standard A and B here. But the security is in process and so is the policies. This is basically, so the minimum capabilities. It says you must have, the state of Ohio requires a minimum of two 911 lines and two 911 answering devices. We have a minimum of three. And we have, it says you need to have the two 911 answering devices that are available for outbound dialing. We have a number of those, four or five outbound dialing numbers. Logging and recording, we have, we already have the capabilities of logging and recording our 911 calls, both landline as well as wireless. And an immediate playback and retention of those calls are already in place. And then the GIS, graph informational system. Again, we have a system in place. It's a very good system. I'd like to buy a better one. But we have a very good system in place already. So we've met this standard. This, I'm not gonna bore you with this, but the state requires me. We maintain a lot of these already. We try to track calls for service, times of days, days of weeks, times of the year so we can minimize costs and maximize the ability for the center to respond to the public's needs. And we do that, I think we do that very well. So it's about 90% of the calls coming in 911 have to be answered within 10 seconds. We meet that standard. 95% of the calls coming in within 20 seconds, we clearly meet that standard. And we got it. So I apologize if it was a little longer-winded, but I always get there. But a little longer-winded than I'd hoped for, but I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. My first question, I'll just start with this. Can we get a copy of your PowerPoint? I think that would be beneficial to all of us.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Could you go back to the last slide where you had the two things split out? All right, you just pass it there.
I'm good. It's a little touchy. I'm good.
All right, so I'm just, I wanna go back into the 80 and the 100% numbers. That's at $15 per 911 call.
$15, it's not for 911 calls. It's $15 for every dispatch run. If you call and say, "My neighbor's dog is barking and I want you to tell him to stop."
Right.
That's a $15 call.
Okay.
If you call and say, "My neighbor blocked my driveway. My cat disappeared." If you call and say, "What time's Halloween?", and they know what time Halloween is, they won't charge you for that call.
Okay.
But if it's a dispatcher's call, those calls are required a fee.
Okay, and then I'm looking...
If it's a fire department call...
It's a double call.
It's double because they will always send the police with the fire.
One of, Hamilton County has protocols that are designed and put in place by Hamilton County to suit their desires. And they have some very good policies. One of their policies is they always dispatch law enforcement with every fire department run. They know that the police may not, police may not respond every time a medic goes out. But their policy is to dispatch the police. And the police can decide to go or not go, but they're gonna bill us for it.
I'm curious right now for Norwood. It seems as though many times the police do sometimes follow them. Is there a protocol? If police officers are available, do they sometimes respond to fires now?
We have a protocol on types of fire runs. If it's a, just a normal, my family member fell down, cut their arm. I need a squad here to help us out. They'll dispatch the fire department. The police generally will not go. They will not dispatch police. But if they dispatch for an unresponsive, snoring individual who has a history of drug abuse, they dispatch police. Fire runs, they dispatch police. Alcohol-involved intoxication victims, they dispatch police. Runs to certain locations. A bar at 11 o'clock at night with an injury, they'll dispatch police. Child injuries, they dispatch the police for investigative purposes, DOAs. There's a lot of runs that are dispatched to police. But we don't bill for it.
So that's not an unreasonable...
No, it's not an unreasonable, it's a blanket policy.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing, you mentioned the $15. Now, that nets down. And I'm not accusing the county man, but the county director now is about as nice a guy as we all know him. Joe Gears worked with him for years. I know him. Mark knows him. The chief knows him. This guy, we've worked with him. He's here to assist us. He will take us, of course. But he's, his goal is to work with us. And you're talking about, maybe you can talk about that, an additional dispatch point that the county could bring somebody down if they have a problem. So we're working together.
Can I let Mr. Thompson finish his question?
Yeah, no, I never actually got to my whole point originally with this. I'm just trying to, cause I'm getting file numbers, but I like to see math. When I take, just looking at the chart, there were a total of 16,333 911 calls.
We're not talking 911 calls. Not 911 calls...
I know, but I thought you were talking dispatch. But I'm assuming there are fewer dispatches than even calls.
I'm talking incidents. There are 46,500 incidents. Those are incidents where the police went in and, or a dispatcher went in and entered information, created a run. We're saying 80% of those are dispatched incidents.
I don't understand how you get from, how you get from to 46,000 incidences from 16,000 calls.
Not every call for the police or fire department comes in on a 911 line. 911 line is when you dial 911. That's a 911 call. If somebody calls 458-4520, and it turns out that a police are dispatched from that number, and we get an astronomical number of calls on that. If we've had 17,000 911 calls, the other calls come on landline.
Right. But for the purposes of going to Hamilton County, they would only be receiving our 911 calls.
No.
They would get those for...
They would get all the calls.
Even the calls just to the standard police hotline number.
We can't give up our, we can't give up our dispatch center.
Right.
And dispatch.
Right.
So we would have to transfer the lines where the citizens call requesting police fire EMS services. We would have to give those lines to the county. The county would field those calls and dispatch services appropriately. We've had 46,500, can you take a couple? Police runs, 4,300 and something fire runs in the year 2016. So if you, if you take the 46,500 incidents, calls for service, take 80% of those. Those are, those are incidents that where the police went to a location to deal with a problem. You take 80% of those, you get 6,22,000 dollars.
Okay.
All of the 911 calls may not turn into an incident. Like if we have a, if we have a tractor trailer bursting into flames on 71, every car driving by is gonna hit 911.
Right.
We might get 20, we just had an accident on 71 today. We probably got 12 calls, 15 calls about the incident. There's a truck on, there's a truck accident. There's a truck, yep, yep, there's a truck accident. We want folks to call. We want them to call. We wanna know because we ask questions of every caller to try to get additional information the better we have, assist our safety services. But all the 911 calls don't generate a run, just like all the landline calls won't generate a dispatch.
Right.
A dispatch is actually when the police are sent, the fire department's sent, and that information's entered into a computer system to document. That's a theft run, a burglary, somebody walking down the street, you know, stopping traffic. Whatever the call may be, that's a dispatched incident. Those calls require a fee.
And so then, just so I get a, and sure I'm understanding. If we were to go to Hamilton County, they would be handling not just 911 calls, but also any kind of call that would come into the police or the fire or any kind of dispatch, like...
The publicized phone numbers that we give to the public to call when they need public services, those numbers would go to the county.
Would they go to Hamilton County?
There are some back office lines that some of us...
No, I just meant the public.
Yes. So the calls that were, the calls that require police fire EMS services, the calls that the public uses...
All of those lines?
Would go.
Would go.
It'd have to.
Yeah.
Because we would, we would turn out our lights and that would literally just be a data entry, a clerical type role, one person that could not handle the dispatch.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanna make that clear because if somebody listening or whatever said, "Well, I multiply 16,000 by..."
It's not that, the 80%...
I know, I know, I understand that. I'm just saying, I'm just saying it would be really easy to say, "Well, there's only 16,000 911 calls and 15 bucks a pop, that's..."
That's a very good clarification. I appreciate you helping me clarify.
I just wanted to make sure that how we got to that number was understood.
Mr. Clark?
So you, I think you said this, I just wanted to clarify. You said the mark system, over on the Norwood side, the mark system, 71,000 is built into the miscellaneous costs?
Built into this here. This is all, this is total output from our, from our program. And where I got these numbers are from the auditor's office. I just pulled the 2017 budget that was spent. And this is, these are the exact numbers that we spent in 2017 off their report. The 70,000, why I put that over here is because that cost isn't gonna go away even if we get rid of our system. We bought it. We got paid for it. And we still, we still utilize it.
Mr. Grayton?
Sure. So you mentioned that if we did, if we did transfer our lives to Hamilton County or to Cincinnati, that we would never be able to have a call center in Norwood again. Can you explain that a little bit?
State of Ohio has kind of put out some mandates that they wanna reduce the number of PSAPs in the state. Part of the reason why is professionalize the system, to integrate the system. Communication in any, any major catastrophic event, whether it be natural, man-made, or otherwise, communication is always, always in the forefront. We can't find out about it and get the information out. We can't respond. So they would prefer that we do away with a number of PSAPs. And a lot of PSAPs are going by the wayside. And switching over, merging with other communities, and then doing joint PSAPs. That is one of the options I'm looking into is if we do keep the PSAP, our 911 communication center, is picking up some calls for service for some of the smaller communities. I would like to look into that as a cost-saving measure for us, as a way of partnering with some of our local area communities.
Perfect.
Can you, thank you. Can you go into a little more detail? You said of some online training for the dispatchers. Is there, can you go into a little more detail on their training that they get from that online training service?
There's an online training service that we have partnered with for our emergency medical dispatching. That is called APCO. APCO is a, it's a highly qualified, top-notch, state-of-the-art training program for communications personnel. They implement policy suggestions. They are leaders in the emergency medical dispatching program as well as basic and advanced communications training. Down the road, what I would like to implement is a cost-saving measure of training and instructor or two of our advanced senior lead instructors to be trained as instructors in those programs and provide that training, that additional training besides what we do geographically and localized to our communication personnel. We have a very good working relationship with Cincinnati and Hamilton County. They have both offered to bring our folks into their classes for nominal costs. So there are ways that we can, we can receive both nationally rated training as well as translator or condensed training for the specifics of our community.
Thank you.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I think I probably have 18 questions, but I won't ask them all at once. The first question I had, overall, you really emphasized the wireless calls. And I just wanted to clarify, the technology to support identification of location, is that only connected to wireless phones that have a data plan?
There are, you've asked a question that could be several hours of answer, but I will try to minimize it. There are some phones out there. If you have a phone that only dials 911. We all know that if you donate your phone to a battered women's shelter, phone and charger, because we need those too. You can donate those to a battered women's shelter. You don't need it anymore, donate to them. That phone will dial 911. And you don't have to pay for the service. It's a free call on any cellphone that works. Those are very difficult for us to track. There are, if a person wants to, we're talking, we have ways that we can, we can track these phones to a certain degree, ways we can try to figure out where the person is. And it goes from everything through some technology things to just asking questions like, "What landmark are you near?" We had an incident where a guy called on one of those phones not too long ago. He was intoxicated and he was lost in the woods. The woods of Norwood. So we spoke to him and we got landmarks. We got, he was on a trail. We got some things that he could see. And we were able to get emergency personnel to him to save him from being lost in the woods of Norwood. He was then appropriately assisted to a less intoxicated state. So, and I don't mean to downplay, but that's a decent example of, as if somebody calls 911 and they have one of these phones, they're very difficult to track. There's not a lot we can do with that technology now, but that is being worked on. Those are areas, gaps in the technology that are being updated.
Thank you for explaining that. I'm being mindful that if a person does have a free phone, they could be more vulnerable overall to emergencies. And so I'm glad you clarified. But something we're paying attention to?
Yes. And part of the program that we want to, I wanna work with the chief on installing, of creating and getting out to our citizens, is to let the public know if they have one of these phones, there are ways that they could maybe reach out to us in the beginning or before an emergency occurs and give us information that we could, that could possibly help us to locate those folks using those free phones.
Thank you. Ms. Aaron, you're next.
Thank you.
Thank you. About one more for now. Thank you. You shared a lot about the numbers of calls as well and how location helps identify where you're at in Norwood. Are you able to break down, is this a Norwood resident making a call? Or is this just a person located in Norwood from the wireless callers?
What I can tell you is currently, our system is limited. We have a CAT system that allows us to enter information. And if we search that information, we can find if we've ever made contact with that person before. And our CAT system or our PAMET system will give us vast amounts of information of the history of our dealings with that person, medical or police or otherwise. The new system that you can actually... If someone calls 911 from a phone and we dispatch EMS to them for a certain reason, we can put dispatch notes right into that call. So when that number comes up again, we hit a history button and it looked here, all the information that we've added to that phone number over the years. So with the new and digital Guardian system, as we keep the system and use the system, it builds and it grows upon itself. And it allows for us to really take charge of... We'll have so much knowledge before we ever ask a question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I know several years ago, when this was brought up, there were issues in the way Hamilton County was charging. If there is 20 calls for that same accident, how are they charging for that? Are they only charging for one? Or are they charging for all of them that come in?
The information I'm getting is per dispatch.
I know several years ago, it was an issue when it was looked into and they were going to charge for more than one call.
The gentleman that I'm working with with the county is an outstanding individual. He explained it to me and I absorbed as absolute as much information about that as I possibly could. If we were to get inundated with quite a few calls over and over and over again per incident, I'm not so sure that there wouldn't be some modification to our bill down the road. Once you... essentially, once we give up our communication center, if we were to turn off the lights and be done with it, we are at the beck and call, the center that we work, that dispatches for us. If technology increases or if they want something fixed, updated, modified, corrected, that bill is going to be passed along. That's just the nature of the business. If you run a business and your costs go up, so do your prices. And in our center, we have... There are quite a few ways that we can cut some costs, modify some costs, share some costs, even working with the county and the city to minimize or even wipe out some of our costs. Doing away with this, we lose all control of that.
So in two years or five years, they could say, "Oh, we're going to start charging for every call." Because am I correct, Mayor? Weren't they going to do that back when we were looking at this in 2009? Didn't they want to charge for each call?
Yes, but that was a previous director.
Yeah.
The new director now is more open and will take us, believe me. But is more inclined to work with us. Keep in mind, he has bosses too. But the previous director was... That's where the name bait and switch came from because some of the chiefs out in the outlying area were very upset at the way they had done it. But that's a previous director. It's all changed now. It's a much better working relationship.
But we still don't know what will happen in the future.
I don't think you can predict that either way. And I don't think he could honestly tell you.
Right.
There isn't really any prediction. What I can tell you is the person running the program today is an absolute stand-up guy. He has helped us out tremendously with increasing our productivity, increasing our... Even just with policy implementation and trying to navigate the emergency medical dispatching requirements. He has been absolutely instrumental in that. And I consider him a very good friend. But I cannot... I don't know anyone on our side or their side that could come up with what the numbers would be down the road. I just know that they're not going to take a loss.
Mark, can you touch on that? Or did you already? And I missed to touch on one spot that they may want to put in some of their equipment to put a seat at the console?
There are some preliminary talks about us doing some joint ventures with Hamilton County. Without really going into the aspects of it, I'm excited about the possibility of a joint venture that both benefits Hamilton County in ways of giving them some additional protective services as well as a benefit for us on the same level. So there are a lot of things that we can... That we have just basically touched the surface talking about that if they were to come through in the future or in the near future, would be beneficial to both our pocketbook as well as the citizens in our calls for service response times.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam President. Thank you as well, Lieutenant, for being here. So I just had a question. I saw that you had put that we had 50,800, I guess, combined incidents between the police and fire last year. It was 4,300, I think, for fire. Did you say 46,000 for...
Yeah, it's 4,318 for fire. And I think that 46,500 is a rounded number. It might be a couple above that.
Okay. So but you said that we also... On this sheet here, we also only had 16,000 total 911 calls. So I was just curious, like, how do we have so many incidents but not that many 911 calls?
Well, there's a little blue box on those that talks about... What's it? The regular... Let me see if I can just give you the actual wording of it. There are admin calls, incoming, outgoing. And then there's total wireline calls. So a wireless call may or may not be a 911 call. That's a cellular call. There's voice-over IP and there's landline. There's business calls. There's a lot of different ways that incidents can be dispatched. 46,000 runs is the actual times that the radio was clicked and a police officer was doing something for the citizens in Norwood. Sometimes... There's a lot of landline calls. The landline calls or the calls on there that we described as admin, incoming and outgoing. Unfortunately, back in 2017, early on in the year, very early on in the year, we removed the admin lines from our 911 headsets. The 911 calls on the current system come in through the 911 PSAP software. They answer the calls. A landline call or somebody calling about their neighbor's dog, they won't call 911. We hope they don't call 911. A barking dog comes in on a landline, an emergency situation comes in on 911. In order for us to prioritize the 911 calls over the landline calls, we separated those two lines. So now a 911 call enters through the PSAP into their headset and they answer that call with the headset that they wear on their head. The regular calls that come in on the phone lines, they pick up the handset like you and I and say hello. So we're able to prioritize 911 calls. Before, if we were on a non-911 call, a non-emergency call, and a 911 call comes in, we had to disconnect from the non-emergency call in order to answer the 911 call because it's in the headset. By splitting them, we can prioritize the 911 calls as our answering. And then the non-emergency calls that come into the landline, if we need to have a call be staged and not be answered right away, that's the call that we're going to stage. We're going to put on hold until we complete the 911 call. And that's just, I think, common sense as far as, you know, maximize our serviceability.
So just to follow up to that. So I'm still... I guess, will you be willing to share when we... You sent out the PowerPoint, but exactly how we got to the 622,000 and the 760,000? I'm still just having some trouble trying to...
Take 46,500 runs. So 46,500 times 15. Now, I'm hoping I did the math right.
So I've got 697,000.
Okay. For 46,500?
46,500 times 15 would be 697,500.
Okay, so don't ask me what... Oh, I'm sorry. We got to add 4,318 times 30.
Okay, so that's 129,000.
See, now my math... Math's not my strong suit. My children would be like Dad. So yes, so that's what?
129,000 for...
Add that to the...
Yeah, a total of 827,000.
Okay, so my math is still wrong. But I'm under that though. I saved you some money.
You did. You saved on here. But I guess then, this is a follow-up just in this whole string. So you said some runs don't have calls that come in. So it sounds like our officers of Norwood are doing things. I guess they're like checking on businesses and doing other things that...
Parking ticket that an officer stumbles across driving around his beach and decides to handle it himself. A lot of our parking tickets, our citizens call them in. We actually encourage that to keep the streets in an orderly fashion for emergency personnel and the public to drive through. So the laws are there for a reason. We'll get into that. But if an officer drives by and you just stop your car in Mill Montgomery Road and get out and walk away because you're just so tired and can't find a spot, he might write you a ticket. That ticket won't be a call for service.
Okay, so the ticket will not be in that 46,000?
The ticket will be in the 46,000. That's why I reduced the number to 80% of those calls.
But it won't be in a... You mean a phone call that...
It won't be a charge.
Yeah. So I guess the question is then, will Hamilton County in the future charge us for that kind of a...
That is a wonderful question.
Yes.
If I'm the only bread store in town and you want bread, if you're a bakery and you close your bakery and buy bread from me, I'm going to charge you what I want to charge you. I'm not saying that the current administrator would do that. He's a wonderful guy. He's given us a great price. $15 is cheaper than we've seen in a decade or more. But things don't get cheaper, things get more expensive. And I can't imagine that $15 will go down. So that's why I run the 100% as a worst-case scenario. 100% of our runs are dispatched runs. That's worst-case scenario. I did the math wrong. I'm actually... Would I short us by $50,000?
820,000. Yeah, about 50,000.
Okay. So I shorted us by $50,000 on 100%. But we don't... It's not 100%. I figure about 20% of our calls for service are officers doing something on their own. Our public is very good. We ask and ask and ask. Our public is very good about calling in the problems that we have in our communities. So that's why I dropped it to 80%. So the 80% number is more realistic. The 100% number is absolutely worst-case scenario. Every run we make is dispatched. If the county charged us for every time they had to type something in the computer system, every time they had to enter a parking ticket, type it in, the address, the officer put in, the person that was cited, run the plate, add that information in, we enter a lot of information on a simple parking ticket. If they started charging us for that, then you're looking at the 100% number, which is wrong. Thank you for making me...
And that's not... I mean, I'm just trying to understand it all. And then just one more on this, if you don't mind. So I just want to make sure that we have like realistic numbers because, you know, I think it's important. So is there a way to get in the incidents? So in those 46,000 police incidents, I mean, could you provide us at some point a list of how many were officer-initiated? How many were not officer... Like how many were called dispatched through the dispatch center?
There is a way of pulling incidents by how they're coded. All traffic stops are coded as officer-initiated. Some traffic stops are dispatched to incidents. Some traffic stops require a dispatch. If an officer needs a backup, there's a dispatch there. If there's warrant, arrest... I can't really get into sheer numbers, but I could probably give you a breakdown. That's why when I said about 80% is a realistic number. If I said all OIA's are officer-initiated, that wouldn't necessarily mean that it's not a dispatched incident. And to go through 46,500 runs and count them and try to read each one and try to determine which one is a dispatched run or not, that's a little more difficult to do. I could do that, but it would be something I'd have to start going forward on a daily basis.
I mean, I don't think that... Definitely don't want you to identify each individual run. But if there's classes of runs that are typically 100% dispatched and there's other classes that are going to be 100% officer-initiated, I mean, I don't know what's possible there. But it would just be... I mean, to even know what the comparisons would be, I mean, we would just have to know how many... And I know you have the 80%, but it's still hard to go...
When I went through the runs and tried to factor those out... Now, my math skills probably doesn't impress you too much. But when I went through and tried to figure out what percentage of all of our different types of calls for service would be in my estimation a dispatched run, one time I went through it, it was in the low 70s. The other time I went through, I was in the 80s. So I kind of... Just kind of rounded it somewhere in the middle of trying to figure that out as best I could. That's the reason why I came up with about 80%. Now, those numbers can fluctuate by a few percent here and there. But the previous numbers that you were given were completely and utterly wrong.
Mr. Thompson?
You touched on this when you went through the deck the first time. I just wanted you to clarify again why you've taken the clerical salary over onto the Hamilton County side?
Every ticket we write, every warrant we serve, every capex we serve, every arrest we make, every parking ticket we write, all has to be entered into the system. When the building department signs warrants on people for not maintaining their property, we enter those warrants in the communication center. When the police department serves those warrants, we remove the warrants. We process paperwork through the clerk's office and then back through to the building department. We do that with missing persons. We enter those in, maintain those databases. Stolen cars, we enter that information in. Pawn shops call us daily and give us a list of all the stuff they pawned, people have pawned. And they give us that information. We run that against databases.
And the reason I ask is because currently, it's actually our dispatchers who are doing that for us. So we have to factor that in.
For example, Cincinnati, when you call Cincinnati Police, you get a police officer. When you want a copy of a report, if you have a warrant confirmed, you call Central Warrants. If you want a report, you call Records. We're small. We are warrants, records, dispatch, 911, information. We're all these. We're a one-stop shop.
Right. I just wanted to make sure it was understood by the audience.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Reagan?
Sure, thank you. So I believe you said nine full-time employees in the call center, seven part-time?
Yes.
And two or three communication officers? How many of those individuals live within the city of Norwood? Do you know that?
I can find out. Looking at the numbers...
I know there's quite a few, quite a few.
I would easily probably say half. I don't know the exact numbers. I could certainly find that out.
I know there's quite a few of them, at least half. And then you also said that you're able to customize your runs as far as, I guess, you go to a certain house 70 times or they have diabetes or anything on the customizing runs. I'd be curious on how many times when somebody calls a 911 system, whether that person knows that person, loves that person, or knows exactly that location where they're calling from because of this close proximity or this small town. In your opinion, what types of things like that would we lose if, say, we did move that to Hamilton County? Would we lose some things?
I think what you're trying to tell me is, okay, somebody calls in and says, "My husband is being mean to me." And we've made runs there before. is being mean to me, and we've made runs there before." Our dispatch center will remember that, will be able to see that in their systems. And if officers in the past have made a run and realize that this guy is six foot four, 400 pounds, and not a happy camper, then we know, we can appropriately correct that run to show that a proper dispatch to that service. Same with a medical. Fire department sent over, and just to touch on that, fire department sent over 60, I think. They might, they might correct me. Might have been 50. It was 50 or 60 specific businesses in Norwood that they wanted to have specific dispatch protocol for those businesses. So, they were, they, they have taken the lead and they're taking businesses in Norwood and prioritizing based on what, what they have there, whether chemicals are stored on site, what's their, their ability for a medical issue or a fire issue, and they, they've, they're tweaking every individual business to make their response more effective for both themselves as first responders as well as for the community that they want to serve. So, we're able to do that. We, we took, we got it all done in one day, and we're going to get more, I'm sure. So, they are, they're, they're going through, what do we have, 650? Is that, 450, 650? We've got quite a few businesses in Norwood. And out of those businesses, they, they want to review and fire and individualize their response. Those are some of the things that won't be able to happen. They could probably happen, it costs us. We'd have to pay for that service to individualize it. And I have our dis, communication personnel do that in their downtime.
So, because of our size, the time from point A to point B would be greatly reduced or upgraded because of just the size of Hamilton County, Cincinnati, just the size of Norwood? This is going to be quicker?
There, there are some policies within the county that would require our fire costs to go up. There's, there's a mutual aid agreement where fire personnel would go on a rotation to back each other up, and that's part of the, an MOU agreement that we would have to sign if we went to the county. So, if we pull fire service out of Norwood to handle and help another community, and we use sometimes pull St. Bernard in, we'll pull other, Gulf Manor in, we've used other services, but to be in a permanent rotation required to respond, that is going to cost us some services. If our fire department's fighting a fire in another jurisdiction through a mutual aid request, we have to bring firemen in to man the house here. So, that, those, there are some, Hamilton County has a very good dispatch program, but they cannot provide the service to the community that we can.
Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you. You talked about Cincinnati Bell ending their PSAP support. You talked about some potential changes at the state level with the amount of funding that's coming across for users of wireless services. I'm wondering, do you have any insights just on the future of PSAPs? I mean, I know you said the state is trying to small up the number, so I'm just wondering if we were to move forward, which I know is your position, and maybe offer services to smaller municipalities, how long do you think that would be sustainable?
Well, when I say they want to reduce the number of PSAPs, by prioritizing, professionalizing, and increasing the requirements of PSAPs, they take the mom-and-pop PSAP of a person sitting in a room with a phone and a radio, and the call comes in, they go, "70 or whatever, make this run." To require GIS mapping, to require the text-to-911 programs, to require the integration that we currently have now, there are PSAPs out there that don't have that. So, what the state's trying to do is by creating a hard and fast line of this, if you want to be a PSAP, you got to meet these standards. A lot of small, very basic, I don't think antiquated, but yes, antiquated PSAPs in rural areas may go by the wayside. We're, we're not at that point. We're not, we're not antiquated. We have state-of-the-art technology in our PSAP. We, the US Council has, over the years, have kept up with the times. Unfortunately, with Cincinnati Bell getting out of the business, it requires a very short-term expenditure to bring us back onto the road, so to speak, because we have to make these changes. But in addition to the, the cost to just do the switch, we are getting a much better system. We would be providing a much faster, more economical, more efficient program for the citizens of Norwood. It's not just, hey, here's this radio, here's this radio. The, the system that we're looking at here is absolutely a very valued system.
So, it sounds like you're saying the state's goal is to raise professionalism, and you're saying we are currently meeting those standards?
Well, we've got, what you see, I've got a couple that we need to tweak or to modify, to increase. The EMD is new. The, the text-to-911 is certainly a direction in the future where we're going. We haven't had EMD in the past and for a very nominal cost. What was originally purported to be astronomical numbers, I believe was the words that I was quoted, turned out to be absolutely not. It turns out to be a very, very manageable, very easily adaptable program. It's just, it's a, it's a benefit to the city and a nominal cost.
Mr. Clark? Just want to kind of follow up on Mr. Brayden's question. I know our police department's done a great job of adding different databases and things as far as like, I know the Citizens' Advisor Group had done like the, for people with autism and things like that. Is that something that like our police officers have access to, or is that going from the dispatch, letting people know that this person has special needs and things before they get there?
Yes, to answer that. It's, it's two questions, right? Can, can the police department access that information, and can dispatch getting it and giving it to the police department? Police department can, but they're driving around in cars.
Right.
They can sit down at the same terminal, it's on the police side. They can sit down at the same, same computer system and see all that information. The way we do it a little different, we enter it in to the system so that police and fire can see it, but we also put it in like a pop-up. Instead of getting an ad to buy something, when we type in an address, it'll pop up this, the nice program. It'll pop up if we have a child there that's autistic. It'll pop up anything we want it to pop up. We currently with the fire department, different businesses, when we punch in a run to that location, it pops up the fire department's protocols of how they want to be dispatched, who they want sent, and in what order. They're, they're very meticulous about how they want things done, and, and we are, we are, we are meeting those needs for them.
Can I just follow? So, that is something if we were to do away with our dispatch center, that is something we could potentially have, but we would probably have to pay additional, is what you're saying?
Cincinnati and Hamilton County use a CAD system very different from ours. A lot of, we, we don't use 100% of the abilities of the CAD system or the dispatch, the PAMETs, what we call the secure system that we use currently. We don't use 100% of that program. Cincinnati has a very good, Hamilton County has a very good program. That is one of the ways, areas that I'm looking at. Some of the things, Ms. Stevenson, at the state, on the state level, one of the very minor things that the state's looking to do is integration of service, of knowledge bases. So, one of the things that I would like to pursue with the city or the county, and I've had conversations with the county, is to maybe talk about switching our, our database program over so that our database would talk to their database, and they would, they would be able, we would be able to share that information across, across boundary lines.
Yeah, I've just, I've heard from many residents that that's a good thing they like.
It is a great thing. On the other aspect of it is like the PSAP compatibility with other jurisdictions. The state would like for us to have mutual, have the ability to communicate with neighboring PSAPs on all sides of Ohio's borders. When you go state to state, things become much more difficult. This, this, this particular company has programs in every county in the entire Indiana-Ohio border and everything that's relative to us in Kentucky.
Just out of curiosity, the pop-ups that you have, is that something that the dispatchers must relay to the officers, or is that something that can be accessed from the terminal if they are in their car? I'm just thinking of potential. We all know there were breakdowns in the systems.
Yes and no.
So, I'm just curious.
Some, some can be accessed by the officers. We try to eliminate that by giving them the information, because we may put information, there may be information pop up on an address that is not relevant, and if, to the officer, but be relevant to dispatch. Or, and so, we won't necessarily give out 100% of, and I hate to use the word pop-up, but essentially it's a high-tech way of saying that we get this instant message that says, "Hey, look at this information. It's very important." So, a lot of the information we do give out. If it, and I, and without going in specifics on residences or addresses or people, there is a vast number of, of things that officers will need to know, that fire personnel, both firemen and EMS services will need to know, and we are constantly updating and adding that information in so that it's, it's readily available. And the officers don't have to remember. They don't have to, to go into their computers and find it for themselves, because we try to tell them not to drive and work on their computers. But we try, we do, we do try to provide them, any information that they, they want to know about a residence, they can give it to us, and we will, we will make sure that it is readily available, and we give it back to them at the moment they need it.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So, I'd really like to learn, talk more about the clerical cost, the six full-time and three part-time that we would need if we went to Hamilton County. And so, I guess the curious, I mean, so if you add the number of hours, let's just say the part-time are 20 hours a week, the full-time are 40 hours a week, that's 300 hours in a week. In 300 hours a week, there's 168 total hours. What are the other, so are you expecting more than one person to have to be on for these clerical things at a time?
What we did is we took the schedule, and we planted a body in 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we added a little bit of buffer for vacations, off time, sick time, all the contractual things that they get to take off, whether if they, if they work overtime and bank it, they get to take that time off. So, it, they save us some money on some end, but we have to maintain. So, we have to have people there, and that gives us the ability to fill those gaps without paying time and a half or double time. And that's why, that's why it's important that six full-timers would man the, the hours, and the part-timers would fill the gaps.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. So, another, just a question that's kind of related. Are there any municipalities that do not have a PSAP, which means that their calls will get answered at Hamilton County, yet Hamilton County doesn't dispatch them? Maybe they transfer the calls to somebody else? I didn't know if we talked about that.
You mean, out of all of these agencies, which, you're saying like...
Are there any that have like a secondary PSAP or that...
There are secondary PSAP. Amberly Bell is a secondary PSAP, I believe. I believe. I believe that they're not a primary PSAP, that they, their calls are routed through another call center system and sent to Amberly, and then Amberly dispatches them. It's, it's a matter of, of software and not as much a matter of efficiency.
Yeah. Are there any though that like have transferred? I mean, I might be wrong about this. I thought I had heard that maybe like Springfield Township or something had, you know, they got rid of their PSAP, but then they still have, like the county transfer their calls to them, you know, after they answer. I might be wrong. Again, I just thought I'd heard there might be secondary.
Well, the counter will, if somebody calls, "I want to speak to an officer," they'll transfer that call. They want to speak to the mayor, they want, they want to speak to you and council. People will call the general line number for all matters, and we try to, as a dispatcher, we try to figure what, what their question is, what their need is, and then transfer them to appropriate service. It might just be that they want to complain about something, or they want to ask a question about something, and that doesn't require a dispatch. That requires a transfer. It's, it's a little up in the air as far as whether or not those calls would be charged. I didn't factor those in as being charged. My calculus, however mathematically incorrect, did not include the calls where they, they want to talk to the mayor.
Sure.
And he gets a few of those.
Can I ask you a question? How many departments, it used to be, some of the smaller agencies out there, they never, they didn't have anybody in the police department, they'll say after three or four o'clock. If somebody wanted to see an officer, they would call the county, and then the county used to dispatch that car, we'll say like it's Fairfax. The guy, the guy shows up at the PD and there's nobody there because the guy's out on the street. So, they would call the county, and the county would send that officer to the police department to make a complaint. Are those, is that trend still prevailing throughout the county for the smaller PDs, or do you not know?
Yes. Let's just take an officer who calls to try to get a warrant confirmed through a small agency that's dispatched by a county. We call the county, the county calls the agency, or sends a message to the agency, the agency calls the county, the county gives a message, the officer drives to the station, calls us, and has to pull the record, and we have to sit and wait, and for them to gather that information. So, it's, it's not a perfect system by any means for the smaller municipalities. To start a PSAP is very, very cost-effective for most of the smaller agencies. We already are a fully functional primary PSAP, so the cost that, that would be entailed in starting one up are, you all spent a long time ago. I don't know if that helps.
Mr. Sanger?
Yep. As far as our backup, if something catastrophic happens and our generator doesn't kick in, our backup would be Hamilton County. Is that correct as far as...
Well, let me ask, answer it with this. Without publicly putting information out there that may or may not jeopardize security measures, I can assure you that we have...
Backup.
Backup units, and, and we have the ability, should the city hall explode and come to the ground, we have the ability for automatic transfer of services to a PSAP that is fully capable of handling our services in the interim.
I follow up on that. Are we anybody's backup as well? I mean, with, I mean, like...
We are currently, we are not, but that is, like I said, those are conversations that have yet to occur in detail.
In regards to the cellphone fees that are charged currently, whether it's 25 cents a call or whatever it is, that money all goes into a pool, but is that regionally that pool, or does it all, the state decides how it's divided up, or is it done by the region?
There is a, the state, the money goes into a pool. Essentially, the way it works and the way it was explained to me is cellphone service plans pay a fee for 911 services. That tax or fee goes into a pool, and those funds are dispersed based on 911 usage. In Hamilton County, we have four PSAPs, and that, that money that comes from the phones registered in Hamilton County gets divvied up amongst those four PSAPs in a proportionate manner. The more calls you get, the more money.
Yeah. I guess my point is, is that if the state is controlling those funds and how they're being distributed, as has happened in the past within the state, they decide that, well, we're going to take a portion of these funds for the state to oversee...
They do that already.
They do that already?
Yes. The state, the state receives the funds. They take, there are policies, so to speak, the state, there are committees involved in this, in the planning stages of how this money is dispersed, that is already decided. There was a request to increase through committees, to increase the funds, taken through 911 or through cellular wireless service plans. That is not quite finalized from my vantage point, from what I know, but we are fairly certain that those numbers are going to increase, and then we have a very high assumption, some, some knowledge that we will get a bigger slice of the pie. What that is and how much money is actually going to be billed is, is not yet been released.
Yeah. Just follow up. It's kind of like a touch on what Ms. Stevenson was saying too. One of the concerns I have is that the state at any particular time could decide that, hey, we're going to have regional PSAPs based upon population, and the heck with Norwood, the heck with Amberly, the heck with, you know, could be heck with Cincinnati. Hamilton County's going to run this whole thing. Clamond County's going to run their whole thing. And I just can kind of, I don't know, maybe it's just feeling I get, but I just can kind of see that happening. It may not be the next five years, but I can just see the state wanting to regulate and oversee everybody's departments more so than they do now, and tell you, you're going to have this region, you're going to have that region, you're going to have this region. I just...
Well, what I can tell you is that, was it 25 years ago, we didn't have cellphones. So, we've come a long way technology-wise. PSAPs can be reduced to a suitcase and can be carried out, opened up, and operated as efficiently as the terminals that we, we're operating now. First computers were huge. Now, you've got a computer, I'm sure you've got a cellphone somewhere on you, and it's bigger than the first computer, I'm sure, by, by many, many gigabytes. Things change. It's not going to change in five years, it's not going to change in 10 years. Down the road, there are going to be some technological advances, make things easier, more efficient for us. There may be new ways required down the road of how we carry, keep our records, stream our information, receive and... our information, receive, and those things will change. The internet on your cellphone is a vast amount of tools. I think we're getting smaller technology-wise, we're getting more efficient. If that become the case, if the state decided to go in and wipe out smaller PSAPs, I would imagine that if a community, there are voters in every community, there are directors of the PSAP program, we have a director here in Hamilton County that has a vote, has a voice. Every county has a voice, every county has voters. I don't think that the state's going to step in and say, follow our rules or else, without some pushback from the people that put them in place in election process. So is it possible to have the state go in a direction down the road to streamline processes? It is possible. I won't see it.
Can I just, real quick-
Certainly. Chief Pramer, yeah, please come up to the microphone so people on hand can hear.
Just real quick, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, to kind of add to, I think what you were saying, that, you know, could they say that there's only going to be one PSAP? And the, in the PSAP requirements that they put out that were coming due in May, they did address that. They limited it to, I think, three PSAPs per county, is that correct?
That's correct.
So they've already done that. Now, they don't include, if you are a PSAP that serves a population of more than, there's a number, I don't know what it is, so Cincinnati is not included in that. So at the time that came out, there were four PSAPs, us, Amberly, county, and the city. So we were thinking, well, that was the original thought was, they're going to have to cut one of us, but Cincinnati does not count because they serve a population greater than whatever the number is. And additionally, I think since that time, I believe that Amberly has dropped down to a secondary PSAP, so they aren't included in that number of four. So I don't know if that kind of answers your question, but they did, they did already address that. So could they cut it further? I mean, who knows? Is that right?
Yes, just to touch on that, Cincinnati's not counted, Amberly Village is not counted. The county, the state was going to allow an exception for Hamilton County, but it turned out that that didn't need to occur. So this is the streamline of the period. By mandating certain standards, the state has really taken a huge leap in managing the PSAPs across the county. We're not as affected by it as some of the much, much more smaller rural PSAP components.
I think that something similar is happening with the state with health departments in terms of getting certifications, so you have 20 years to get certified, and if you don't, you don't, if you don't meet the certification standards, you don't get state subsidy, and that's kind of their way of weeding out those who can't meet-
Well, and one thing I can tell you-
...the standards that they require.
Right. And on the offshoot of that, on the complete opposite side of that, there are, there are ways, the state had made some moves in some homeland security-related areas to shrink the systems in place to handle major emergencies without really going into it. They've realized that that isn't, that cannot happen, and they've gone back to that they need the smaller databases, they need the smaller capabilities for, of wide and effective distribution from the state. Everybody wants to streamline, and sometimes that's not the best route to go, and the state's figured that out on a couple of issues.
I just came to you for one of those.
Yeah, the, the whole thing is, and I've always said, my feeling is to keep that 911, there's no doubt about that. But I did say realistically, if the city and the county quit the little bickering and decide for somehow, which, you know, I can't see in the near future, to have one communication center, we're out. Because at that time, then I think the comm centers, you know, if they decide to have one, there will be an east side and a west side comm center, like there is on bands now, unless that's old fashioned. There's an east side and a west side in the county. And so if they decide, Cincinnati decides to cut it out, they've got what they call the fusion center down there, which is state-of-the-art, all kinds of emergency stuff. But if they ever decide to do that, then we're out. But that's going to be a long way down the road. And my feeling has always been to keep that 911, but down the road, if it comes down to just one, then we're going to have to be realistic.
I can assure you that conversations that I've had, that's not in the near future.
I couldn't think of.
Any other questions?
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. I just have two, and you probably adjusted these in your slides already, I just forget, we've discussed a lot. Was 911 always a part of our communication center?
Yes. 911, since the implementation of 911 as a program, and you were around, Mr. Mayor, when that happened, can you, if you probably know the day? Sorry, I, we have to-
There's an advantage to being a little-
We have this little thing.
Yeah, I remember when it first came in, I'll tell you who worked on it, it was Carl Burrow and Bobby Sorrell, and they went to every location in the city, every house, every building on the corp line. You know how we get really close on one side of the street, like at Madison Edmonds? And they did, they was able to determine and document what businesses were in Norwood and what businesses were in Cincinnati. So they did all that and put all that information in and provided it, as a matter of fact, they videotaped the whole thing. Of course, somebody probably threw that away, but then that was all provided to Cincinnati Bell for the 911 system. And the first 911 system was set up in the old B of I downstairs, the year of indemnification down there, and that's where it all started. Saying in the 80s, about the same time, I think 85, 86, there's one 41117 come in, so it was in that same era, and it was a big deal. Because, trivia question, is anybody remember the old number? You would, Joe, Marilyn, you would, was 6311212. And now it's simply 911. So it's just changed everything, mostly for the better.
You got a follow-up?
I do have a follow-up, and again, I think you addressed this, I've just been processing a lot.
That's okay, I'm very forgetful.
Is the, is the, do you have a slide that talked through all the services of the communication center? Because what I'm not, I'm not holding on to in terms of the definition of the, it's the, I noticed that the public safety answering point, is it defined by the practice of answering 911 calls?
I'll be honest with you, 911 is the requirement that the state is governing. The state governs how we answer emergency calls for service. That is the basis of everything that we're doing, because emergency services are first and foremost. But the quality of life issues that go with that, the administrative functions that go with that, our communication center does more than a communication center should do. But we do that at the informational requests by the chiefs of police and the chief of the fire department. The city sees something, if council sees a need that needs to be addressed, that a community member reaches out to you, has a need that needs to be addressed, it may be the communication center that handles that, because we are, that is our job, is to track and evaluate what the public needs and get the proper social services to them.
Okay, so the, I guess a follow-up to that, and mind you, this is my first presentation hearing about this, so if it sounds silly, bear with me. So the Norwood Communication Center has a core set of services, one of which is 911 dispatch, which is regulated by the state?
Yes.
Okay. So earlier when you were clarifying that if the communication center goes away, were you articulating that the 911 services could not be reinstated?
No, no, no. If we, once we close, if we were to do away with this, with our communication center, 911 services would transfer to another public state, another PSAP, another entity, Hamilton County. If we were to contract with Hamilton County for our 911 services, we could also contract with them for all of our calls, which essentially would have to be based on cost measures. If we tried to split the two costs, we would, we would end up spending more than if we gave them all of our services.
So I think I'm understanding you. We've wrapped around additional quality-of-life services around providing this 911 dispatch in our Norwood Communication Center?
As far as a PSAP, all PSAP's primary obligation is 911.
Okay.
All PSAPs handle non-emergency calls. So Hamilton County, the city, Amberly Village, and us, and Hamilton County, we, if somebody calls because their cat's stuck in a tree, Hamilton County and Cincinnati handle those calls as well. Calls are prioritized by 911 first, non-emergency calls second, and the 911 calls are then further prioritized, as well as every call is prioritized based on, on needs and availability of services. So calls are tiered. Emergency calls that, like I said, a broken leg wouldn't, wouldn't be dispatched if we had a heart attack victim or a stroke or a diabetic emergency. That person may wait for a squat if we've got multiple emergencies going through.
Thank you. I recognize what you were saying about prioritizing the calls. I guess what wasn't so clear to me was what were the services that were separate from 911, that a, that a PSAP is required to administer, and I think you just hit on that, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
PSAPs are generally just calls for service. Our PSAP picks up other things that larger municipalities can handle through a completely separate division. If we had 100 speeding tickets and reports a day coming in, we wouldn't be able to handle that. We would have to, we'd have to start a program for records or for data entry for the division. Because the size of our community, we are able to effectively handle those, those added costs.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. You'd mentioned earlier, Lieutenant, that there could be some times in the future that Hamilton County, there might be some upgrade costs that they have to do, and that they have to, you know, pass those costs along to, you know, the various PSAPs. Are you referring to like a one-time charge that we could get charged above and beyond per call, or are you saying that they might just raise the rates?
Yes, can we both?
Yes. Look, it's, if, and I don't know what, I'm just trying to, really trying to keep it as open as possible. I, we don't honestly, we have some guidelines from the state, we have some desires of our own that we'd like to see, that we feel that this technology is going in a certain direction. But to know where, what, coming down the line, cost-wise, whether it be a one-time, a purchase of a program or a system, or implementing another center, or maybe we find a better way to handle the radio aspect of the system. I don't know. But every time you modify something, there's a cost. And the county is just like any other business, it's a business in saving money, and they're going to pass those costs on to the folks who utilize their services. And I don't know what that may be. It could be anything from the same thing that we have to buy, they're going to pass those, that cost on. It's a much larger scale, we would buy, you know, we buy a small item, they would buy a larger item. Sometimes those costs are the same. It could be that, it could be anything where the county just wants to, you know, their costs are going up, so they want to reduce some of their costs, so they just push it out to the outlying jurisdictions. I don't know, I hasten to try to put out these allegations of what could happen, but they're a business, and businesses will make changes to keep that business alive.
Just a last question that I have. St. Bernard, Redding, and Deer Park are not lit up there in this Hamilton County map. Where do they, who dispatches them?
St. Bernard's out of the city.
St. Bernard dispatches themselves currently. I believe the county handles, and I might be incorrect here, but I believe some of these communities, the county might handle their 911 program, but not their actual just landline calls. So they have a dispatch center that handles the 911, or the landline calls, and the county may receive and dispatch the other services. I mean, I could probably get to the bottom of that, but I, they're not PSAPs, so I would assume that, have you got some answers on that?
Just, actually, I just, when you were asking the question, contacted Redding's chief to find out. They dispatch all their own calls, but the, they're not a PSAP, so the calls go through the county and they pay a user fee to the county for transferring the 911 calls to them at that answer. Now, I don't know for sure about St. Bernard, or what was the other one that you saw?
What did you do?
Well, that's the Northeast communication center.
I would imagine that it is likely the same for them, that's probably why they're-
It used to be handled with what they called the family gate.
Yes. All those Elmwood, St. Bernard-
They called it, they called it, they need them all on one frequency.
That's it.
Excellent. Okay. Is that what Amberly's doing now?
I don't know. I would have to talk to Chief Wallace.
They dispatch themselves and have their own 911. They don't dispatch the party department.
Yes, the county.
The party department goes to the county. Anything else, they dispatch. If they get a call for a paramedic run, they transfer it to the county, the county dispatchs it to the paramedic. Amberly Gulf Band is responsible for that.
Yes.
So I think the question then is, if Redding and St. Bernard, if they are not a PSAP, so if they're still paying the county to answer their calls and then transfer their calls to them, you know, why are they doing that? Are they afraid of the county's service? Do they believe they're not getting as good of service with them? Do they believe their police are better served on their own radio band? Like, I mean, that would be the question I would love to know, is like, why aren't they just using the county and saving money?
I don't necessarily know that switching full services over would save them money. I think that, I would imagine that it might be that they save money doing it this way, it might be that maybe they save money switching over to county, but yet they compromise service to the community. So maybe this is a happy medium? I don't know. We could certainly get to an answer on that.
They don't have a PSAP, period.
Right, but that, why, I agree. I'm just wanting to know, what do they know that, you know, these other municipalities don't when it comes to, why are they still maintaining their own center? I think it would help us to say, hey, well, if they're seeing that they had all these issues with the county, that might be another reason to stay, keep our own center. So that's why I'm just curious about, about.
Just wanted to follow up with the, the cost of, of the county dispatches. The 15 cents that you're saying per call or whatever?
$15.
I'm sorry, $15. Yeah, thank you. Do, like, are they, is that for a period of time and then we renegotiate, or?
Imagine we would, we would enter a contract with the county, and that contract would probably be annually. What it was plain to me is, we're, we're going to do $15 per dispatch run, and we'll evaluate it each year, and so it's not like this month, they dispatched 2,700 runs, so we got to write a check. I think it would be as like an annual payment thing where we would, or quarterly payment, and then it would be tweaked each year, where they go up, may come down, essentially more, we probably believe it more would go up. So it's a matter of how they feel, what drain we are causing their services. And I said, I apologize for my math, Ms. Bonsell corrected me so eloquently, but that's what he does, he's very smart math, I should have called him when I got these numbers. If you, if you look at the numbers to, even if we dropped our percentages down dramatically, we're still over, what, 175,000, I don't know, 100, almost $200,000 upside down on an annual basis, even at $15 dispatch, I guess you could do the math on that, but I mean, that would be a substantial amount of reduced amount. So even if we could figure out a way to put cellphones in the cars and have some self-dispatching going and reduce some of those numbers, we can't reduce them by that amount without just completely wiping out the quality of service that the Norwood citizens require from their community. We're talking about property values. You start cutting services to the point where it affects property values, you're going to irritate your citizens pretty bad.
Matt, I'm going to give you the last one.
First of all, I appreciate you taking the time. I think one of the things that came across in this session was that that comm center performs a number of services that most people never associated with the comm center. Your question and your question, council members, were very good. your question, uh, council members, were, were very good. And, uh, and I think you, you have Lieutenant Rankin's car, it's time to digest it. And, and if you think of more questions to ask him, I think the loss of this 911 center would be, uh, let me be blunt with it, it's something that I can't accept. Because I, I truly believe the, the ramifications could be, and it's no overstatement, life-threatening. Uh, if you, if you've never, if you've been unfortunate enough to need the 911 service and you've called 911, and by the time you hang up the phone, you can hear the sirens, you don't get any better than that. So I would hope that, that if you have any questions, to think it over, get the math and contact Lieutenant Rankin. Because this has taken a long time. We have thought about this, Mr. Gears and I have talked about it, and with on the chief and everybody else have talked about this, to take the time to look at this while there were changes in effect. So by the time we were prepared to, when it was, we were sure that it was going to go in, in the direction that it's going, prepare this presentation to show to you. The other issue is that we, uh, Mr. Gears and I had the discussions with the planning commission. We had talked about, you know, do we take it to the planning commission? Well, we, we had also had another conversation where we agreed that this council should be, you know, be brought the information first. And then we'll take it to, uh, the planning commission.
Financial planning commission.
Financial planning commission, yeah.
There's a difference between that and the planning commission.
There's a lot of planning. So, the, the other thing is, if you look at, we'll say, well, it will cost us $300,000 more if we would go to the, rather than to go to county to keep it. That's 300,000, well-studied. And I can tell you, I believe, and maybe I'm wrong, that if you talk to the residents, I believe hands down, you unshadow the doubt that they'll want to keep this 911 system. But I encourage you, and, and, and Mark is, is available, the chief's available, Joe's available, and I'm available, if you have any questions, now's the time. You have the information, don't stop now. Keep asking those questions and, and getting into it. Because as, as you walk away from this meeting with all the, the information that you just, you'll have additional questions, I'm sure of it. So if we can assist you, or Lieutenant Rankin can assist you, or the chief, or, or Joe Gears or myself, don't hesitate to call us. We will get you the information. I not, may not be able to get it off the top of my head. Joe, you can come up with an answer just like that. And, and Mark and the chief will be more than happy to get, provide you the information that you need. And this, and this is being done after, you know, there's been a lot of rumors going around. What we've provided you is the facts as we know them now. So if we can provide you with the definite information and facts, please let us know. Thank you.
And, Officer Lieutenant Rankin, I want to thank you. I know you have kids that you took care of and, and are important to you. And I appreciate the fact that you took the time in your evening and spent with us. And thank you, Matt, for sharing you with us tonight. You gave us some very good information. So, I think, you know, we, we have some information now that we can make, council can digest and make a really informed decision.
And just to, thank you so much for letting me come up here and give the presentation. I will forget everything you've asked me to look up and, uh, for you to get back to. So, you have my email, you have my phone number. Uh, I love emails. So if you want to email me your question, uh, I'll get you an answer. Uh, so please reach out to me. And James, let's crunch some numbers together, because I might need you.
You will provide the first point to us. Maybe we can update that slide.
If somebody could, uh, maybe send me an email list?
Oh, how about?
You've got it? Okay, well, we can get it, we'll get it to you right away.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Um, this meeting, I'll be pretty of a hole, is what went in. Thank you for being here.